And please state your name and address before you speak.
Speak up. We do have a microphone. This has some limitations, so speak clearly. Speak up.
Also, it'd be good if everyone, not to keep it briefly, but if you want to piggyback on what someone else is saying, or you agree with what they're saying, not to, you know, to go on, you know, more than is necessary. So if someone is saying exactly what you believe, say jito, whatever, maybe expand a little, but for this, you know, to keep things moving along, I appreciate it. You know, we keep to the point and everyone can be heard. That's it. I will start with letters. First one in no particular order that's sitting on my countertop here is from Joseph Curdo of 59 Chestnut Street. "I, Jeff, and Village Board of Trustees, I presently reside at 59 Chestnut Street in the Village of Cold Spring and presently do not rent any areas of our house. My wife and I, like many, would like to entertain the option on a very limited basis to help offset taxes, fund and improvements, or fund a vacation which is sorely always needed. I have seen through this process, you have made adjustments to the proposed law accommodating those homeowners like myself, and we appreciate it. I would like to suggest a minor revision to Section 100-3A, three, one-time short-term rental. Though I'm not, let's see, though I may not be interpreting it correct, correcting it seems to suggest that category would be allowed a one-time only rental and for a maximum of 14 consecutive days in a calendar year. From a practical standpoint, of which I see no burden on anyone to change that to a maximum of 14 days with a minimum of two days consecutively. This would provide flexibility without significantly altering the process or causing any burden on Village, on the Village and its residents. We have no interest in being innkeepers on a regular basis, but like many, we are constantly trying to keep our expenses reasonable and affordable. I appreciate your consideration and hard work in an almost impossible task." Thank you, Mr. Curdo. Next is a letter from James and Francis Pergama. "Dear Mayor, Morandi, and Village Board of Trustees, we wanted to be on record in protest of the issuance of permits for short-term rentals. After reading the revised Local Law 01-2021, Revised 629-2021, we are still very concerned about the consequences of land short-term rentals in the R1 zoning district. With a vibrant Main Street zone for business and commercial enterprise, it does not seem right that Village property owners who opted to buy homes zoned strictly for residential purposes should now have their quality of life diminished by the transient nature of short-term renters. Here are a few points. Residential homes will be sold to those who see a business enterprise rather than those who wish to be the part of the Village and community." Bullet Point Two: Other than the price of permit and some Main Street merchant activities, there is no tax benefit for the Village, the town, or the county. The legal-run, legally-run commercial B&amp;Bs have to pay taxes on their merchant income, and half a block away, the R1 short-term rentals continue to make money under the table. The local merchants and a few property owners who generate income in short-term rentals will benefit, but the average Village taxpayer will mind. Third Bullet Point: The quality of life issues for neighbors of short-term rentals is a grave concern. As Village residents, we would not want to think that every weekend we do not know who is coming and going next door. This is a safety and security issue, plain and simple. There are no background checks or vetting processes through Airbnb or VRBO, and there is no demand for higher liability and home insurance. Therefore, there is no recourse for the property owners and the neighbors to seek legal compensation for vandalism or crime. Bullet Point Four: There is also the possibility of short-term renters violating the noise ordinance, which would generate more police calls throughout the Village. We did not choose to live in a commercial zone, nor did we choose to live next door to a hotel and were boarding them. Final Bullet Point: As the enterprise of short-term rentals expands, so does demand for Village services such as sanitation, emergency response units, and local police. Should the Village of Cold Spring become a community where the Village residents are the focus of local services, or should the focus be on the enterprise of a few property owners? We hope the Village of Cold Spring Village Board will consider these valid concerns when voting on Local Law 01-2021. As taxpayers, we do not wish to see the amount of tax dollars that we pay, which is no small sum, go to subsidizing commercialization of our residential area. The residents may be Village of Cold Spring, a community, sorry, the residents make the Village of Cold Spring a community, not the hikers or visitors come off the train for the day. Please preserve our Village. Thank you for your time, James and Francis Pergama." I don't have an address where they live. Oh, there, sorry, it's 4 Northgate, or Northern Gate Lane. Next is Evan Hudson. I don't know if he has an address. He's on High Street. I don't know the number. "Thank you to the Board of Trustees. Thank you for working to regulate short-term rentals that have so blighted communities across the world, including Cold Spring. In an age of mass tourism, it is more critical than ever that priority be given to the needs full-time residents over the pressure of short-term profit. These needs include stability, peace, and quiet security and neighborliness, all qualities that SDRs tend to undermine. While I applaud the Board for approving the, to regulate, for moving to regulate SDRs, I am concerned with creeping erosion that seems to accompany each iteration of the proposed law. To name a few, 60 nights per year has become 90. 5% of housing stock has become seven and a half, and now, subject to certain conditions, LLCs are entitled to participate. I believe that LLCs should only be allowed to participate if the person living on the premises is not only one of the principals, but both, one, the majority owner of the outstanding equity, and, two, the person controlling the LLC. Otherwise, the intent of the provision can be circumvented by a corporate landlord giving a corporate hotel keeper, say, 1% of the LLC equity plus a place to live. Perhaps the law is already drafted to prevent this kind of circumvention. If not, it should be. In addition to that suggestion, I implore you not to allow any further erosion of the proposed regulation. It is important to keep in mind that, as with most regulation of profit-seeking enterprises, the Board has heard and will continue to hear most loudly from the rental businesses themselves. That is only natural, since they have much to lose by being regulated the way other businesses have negative externalities are regulated. Conversely, you have heard and will continue to hear less from the citizens of whom the externalities are imposed, since the harm is diffused and the citizenry passively trusts the Board to protect its interests. I hope to right that imbalance in some small part by this comment letter. Thank you, Evan Hudson. Let's see. Final is a Tolstonian letter. This is, is this a long one, or is that a short one at the end? Okay, we'll go from long to short. This one's from John Lane. 85 Main Street, Mountain Avenue. "Dear Mayor, Board of Trustees, this letter constitutes public written commentary submitted to the Village Board of Trustees in advance of a public hearing scheduled for July 27, 2021 at 6:30 PM pertaining to a recently modified version of proposed Chapter 100 of the Village SDR Code relating to permitting and regulation of short-term rentals with the Village, within the Village of Cold Spring. As you know, I, along with other Village residents, have previously submitted written and oral commentary and objections to the proposed CTR law, or code. I understand that the Village Board of Trustees cares deeply about the community and has devoted endless hours to the administration of Village matters that it has taken, that it has been tasked to oversee, including the lawrunning amendment and working of the Village Code. We understand and appreciate the time and effort that the Village Board of Trustees has devoted to these tasks. We also appreciate Village Board of Trustees' serious consideration of public commentary concerning the proposed CTR Code. Our commentary has been thoughtfully formulated, presented in good faith, and with the utmost concern about the care of this community. Many of us have lived and worked in this Village for most of our adult lives, raised our children here, put them to local schools, and fulfilled all our obligations as residents and taxpayers. We would prefer to remain within and continue to contribute to the community. The short-term rental platform that has arisen through businesses such as Airbnb have crucially enabled many residents to stay afloat economically in recent years, particularly during the past year and a half during the global pandemic and lockdown and its lingering effects. Much has already been written and said to date by me and others regarding the proposed CTR Code."
SDR.
What's that?
SDR.
Is it?
SDR.
What do I keep saying?
CTR.
Oh, S, sorry.
It's really.
Okay, well, this is not voting well. While the latest version of the SDR Code has relaxed some of the back-end restrictions on a property owner's operation of an SDR, which we and many other residents objected to strongly in prior comments, we still believe that the overall substance of the modified SDR Code and the Village Board of Trustees' current approach in proceeding to move forward, even as currently a modified, will prove detrimental to the community and expensive and problematic to implement and enforce. In an effort to be as brief as possible, we ask the Village Board of Trustees to please consider the following comments and suggestions. Front-end versus back-end short-term rental rules, legality, and practical effects. As many others and I have stated previously, the proposed short-term rental code contains several problematic and overreaching restrictions which continue to be objectionable and unnecessary, difficult to implement and enforce, and in some instances legally invalid. The members of the Village Board of Trustees have voiced sometimes strong opinions about their views on short-term rentals, but unfortunately, personal opinions do not parlay into good rulemaking. Indeed, the Village Board of Trustees have very limited powers when it comes to rulemaking concerning land use and zoning matter. The Village Board of Trustees is not a legislative body, but an administrative one, and its rulemaking authority is delegated via state and county law. In other words, it must only promulgate rules that are proportional to the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, and which must not be based on opinion or personal bias. As in limitation to sanctions relating to a property owner's operation of a short-term rental or back-end rules, it seems that Village Board of Trustees have imposed some of these restrictions based largely on perceived biases and opinions. Also, the very enforcement and sanctioning of noncompliance through a series of fines presents a whole host of practical legal issues. Presumably, Village staff and local police will need to constantly monitor the operation of short-term rentals and, in many instances, attempt to undergo warrantless searches of private property with respect to ensuring and enforcing compliance for restrictions contained in a civil code. Further and with particular regard to these latter fine sanctions, mandatory disclosures of confidential and personal information by each short-term rental operator will be necessary. Valid legal claims challenging similar short-term rental rules have been recognized recently, and at least two federal district courts in New York. In two cases decided recently, New York-based federal district courts have upheld claims challenging similar mandated disclosure and fine provisions as violations of the Fourth Amendment right to privacy and prohibition against unlawful search and seizure. Cases additionally, in Calvi, the court allowed several other claims to proceed in that case, including alleged violations of the Fourteenth Amendment Equal Protection Clause and Fourteenth Amendment Government Takings Clause against a 90-night-per-year rental cap on short-term rentals as constitutionally unlawful. Calvi at 6-7 and 19-20, those are the ones, sorry. Although the Village Board of Trustees has increased the per annum cap from 60 to 90 days, there simply is no basis for limiting a short-term rental operator's ability to offer a combination for a fixed number of nights. In fact, Airbnb data shows that almost one-third of the listings within Cold Spring operate at reservation rates of greater than 90 nights per year. In terms of the type of private information disclosure that appears to be mandated by the current proposed short-term rental rules, in order to verify compliance with some of these restrictions, the Village also may need to consider other privacy concerns. For example, any data involving guests who reside in the EU countries are particularly sensitive in light of the EU's general data protection regulation, which has been in effect since 2018. In our experience, a significant number of visiting guests, particularly during the summer months, come from the EU countries. Additionally, based on statements made at Village Board of Trustee meetings over the past months, the permitting process or front-end rules or require additional expenditures of significant Village funds to implement, particularly through the hiring of additional inspection personnel. It also appears that the inspection process may be difficult to initially implement. It is almost certainly unrealistic that the initial permitting and inspection process will be completed before the end of 2021. Given the remaining timeframe, the change in the majority of the Village Board of Trustees following the November election, while there appear to be no more, no material disputes with the Village Board of Trustees' authority to enact a fair front-end permitting and inspection process per se, given the problems with the remaining back-end rules and the time needed to smoothly execute an appropriate permitting and inspection process, the currently proposed short-term rental code should be tabled until after the November election. Hardship exceptions and relief. It would also be fair and prudent to incorporate and codify personal hardship exceptions into any short-term rental code proposed and enacted. In particular, such relief is imperative given some of the back-end restricts containing, contained in the proposed short-term rental code. Substantial numbers of residents have experienced life-altering and, in some cases, permanent health and economic hardship since the inception of COVID pandemic and lockdown and the economic effects that have occurred in its wake. Those hardships continue for many of the present, of many in the present and for the foreseeable future. As a result, short-term rental model has proven to be crucially necessary supplement to many residents' ability to make ends meet. Judicially recognized hardship exceptions to zoning regulations have existed for many decades, but are burdensome and difficult to pursue. Given the extraordinary circumstances and the detrimental effects many of the back-end restrictions would unwittingly cause to many Village short-term rental residents, should the current short-term rental code be enacted, fair and equitably hard, enacted, fair and equitable hardship exceptions and relief should also be incorporated into the code. Short-term rental advisory committee. The Village Board of Trustees has regularly-formed advisory standing committee to assist in formulating, implementing rules and regulations, including certain portions of the Village Code, such as those involving parking and policing. In this instance, the Village Board of Trustees, for some unstated reason, opted not to do so, which is unfortunate. As a result, the proposed short-term rental code conveys an adverse us-versus-them message. If approved, it will leave the Village with an overreaching set of restrictions and sanctions and will perpetuate a negative atmosphere between short-term rental operators and the Village, including the local police, who apparently will be tasked with enforcing compliance of the short-term rent, short-term code. The upshot, should the proposed short-term rental code be enacted, is that these rules will sow conflict. That's the upside, oh, the upside, yeah. Conflict, resentment and discord as between Village residents and Village government and staff, as well as potential between certain groups of Village residents. We have previously urged the Village Board of Trustees in written and spoken comments to work with a group of resident short-term rental operators in designing a set of rules that are much fair and work for everyone. We continue to advocate that the Village Board of Trustees will restanding short-term rental advisory committee before any rules are voted on or implemented. Self-regulation oversight. The permitting and enforcing of short-term rental rules within the Village should be executed collaboratively, as be the short-term rental operators in the Village. An advisory committee as proposed above would be significant for its staff and achieving collaborative implementation and oversight of the short-term rents permitting and rules. The objective of developing a collaborative set of rules should lead to a more low-impact self-enforcing structure as between resident short-term rental operators in the Village. Finally, the table Chapter 100 until after the November election. After the month of August, when many residents are away for substantial periods of time, there remain only two months before mayoral and Village Board of Trustee elections occur. At that point, a new mayor and Village Board of Trustee majority will assume control of the Village government. In light of the above concerns and realities involving the currently proposed short-term rental code, we strongly urge that further action on Chapter 100 be tabled until after new mayor and Village Board of Trustee members are sworn in and assume their duties in December. Thanks in advance for considering these comments and suggestions. John R. Lane. And finally, in contrast, this is from Mary Ann Remmy of 5 Cedar Street. "I am writing in opposition to proposed Village Code relating to short-term rentals. As a Village resident, I do not think I have the right to do whatever I want or to my property. I do believe that I have a responsibility to this community, as evidenced by my various volunteer activities. I urge the mayor and board to take a step back from the unmanageable hosted SDR rules that are currently proposed. I encourage you to engage with advisory group of responsible short-term rental operators, develop rules that will protect the health and safety of visitors while maintaining the quality of life of Village residents, as well as character of Village. I am not convinced that by offering affordable lodging to visitors, whether they are here to hike or visit family or to get out of the city for a weekend, that I am harming my community. I have not heard an objection, objective reason from the mayor or board that a responsible, that a responsibly hosted short-term rental is harmful to the community, neighborhoods, or the character of the Village. What I have heard are personal biases and instances of inconvenience, some of which are merely anticipated. Like it or not, the Village draws visitors. Responsibly hosted short-term rentals accommodate visitors within our neighborhood, which is preferable to holidaying on the river." Mary Ann Remmy. And those are the letters we have received since our last, sure, last public hearing. And so I'll open it up to anyone who'd like to speak. As I said, if you-
Let's get the list of people to their side, yeah?
Okay, can I have that list, or?
Thank you.
Dave, Lillian-
No, no, it's good, it's good.
Sure?
Yep, I'm fine.
Never mind.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Here we go. So speaker list, starting off with Kathy Bogradis, 46 Parrish Street. Because I, yeah, anywhere right in there, just so we're moving in.
I get very nervous speaking in public, so if I stumble, I'll try to go slow.
Just if you can speak up a little bit, just so, because our, our microphone is pretty bad.
Thank you for listening to me today. I just want to express that when my husband and I bought our home in 1994, we were very mindful about the zoning of where we were buying our home. And we wanted R1 zoning for three primary reasons. One, to protect our investment. Two, to protect our privacy. And three, to protect our security for safety reasons. And so, we are unhappy with the current proposal for the change of R1 zoning. And, but we're also, we also understand the time and effort that, that the Board of Trustees has taken to try to preserve the integrity of the community and, and proposing a thoughtful change to the code. With that being said, I'm not happy with the current revisions. First of all, the original provision said that no more than 5% of the, the homes in R1 and B1 zoning would go to SDRs. That has increased by 2.5%, and that is a significant increase. If you consider that it's a 60-day maximum rental or 90-day maximum, maximum rental, that times that added 16 SDRs adds significant increase to our infrastructure and a stress on it, such as policing, water sewage, trash, food town, you know, you name it. That adds quite a lot of significant increase to stresses. The one part that I was really disappointed in was the enforcement of the SDRs. Currently, our current code is not being enforced, and I would suspect it's not being enforced because of lack of resources to enforce that. And in order to have a proper enforcement of a new code, that's going to require resources, and it is going to require more detailed record-keeping. And you mentioned that after the inspections, the enforcement is going to be, is going to be done by the Cold Spring Police. And honestly, I, I don't think this should be a priority for the Cold Spring Police. I think that it should be thought out, that there should be a more mindful enforcement in place. I can understand that the police can be called if there's a noise disruption, but for them to count how many days SDR has, if they've reached their maximum capacity, to see if, you know, to check every property accordingly, that takes time and resource from our police department that could be used for more important things for the security of our, of our community. So in order to find the resources, I feel that the current fee structure is woefully inadequate. I think $250 per application or per person who's been chosen by Lotto is not enough. I can tell you right now, I don't want my taxpayer dollars to pay for the, be the resource to pay for the enforcement of SDRs. I think that should be on those people who are renting the SDRs. So therefore, I, I would recommend an increase of those, of the fees. Finally, I think before this, the new code is validated with the state, I do think it would be fair to the community, and I think it would be proper, that they are given a full detailed list of who is going to enforce the cost of that enforcement and a detailed budget of the proposed revenues and the proposed cost of the enforcement. And I say this only because it is very frustrating right now that the current code is not enforced. Without that proof to the community, it gives us little faith that this code, new code will be enforced.
Thank you very much. Lillian Moja.
I actually took the time to write my notes down because I didn't know what I was like.
Just give your name and address for the, for Jeff.
Lillian Moja, 133 Main Street.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to give you my perspective on short-term rentals. It's not about the noise. It's not about the strangers. It is the fact that individuals looking for short, long-term lease rentals are being boxed out. My husband and I are looking for housing. We need a one-bedroom apartment. Because of my husband's infirmities, we need, a place with stairs is not recommended. I would like to stay in Phillips Town. I would love to remain in the Village. I have lived here in the Village since I was 11. I graduated from Haldane. I'm a parishioner at Our Lady of Roretto Church. On September 26, 1996, I did something nobody ever thought I would do. For almost 25 years, I have dedicated myself and have served this Village proudly as a member of the Cold Spring Police Department. My community involvement does not stop there. For the Village of Cold Spring, I have honorably served on the 100th Anniversary Committee, the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, the Comprehensive Board, and have helped at Community Day celebrations. The place I reside in is a house. The Village of Cold Spring is my home. Do you know where the available one-bedroom apartments are in the Village of Cold Spring right now? I do. They're listed as short-term rentals. This is the reason why I can't find housing for my husband and I. I want to continue to serve this community. I would like to do more, but I won't be able to if I can't stay here. I understand that landlords can get two to three times as much a night with short-term rentals, opposed to a long-term lease rental. But where do you find the community members to help keep this Village the great place it is? People who are willing to give back are the same people who are being forced out. Something needs to change. I would like to thank the Village Board for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I hope that the law that will be enacted will in some way address my concerns.
Thank you, Lillian.
John Lane.
Thanks. I really don't have that much more to say.
Just for, for Jeff.
John Lane, 5 Mountain Avenue. Thanks for reading my letter. You read it. It was somewhat lengthy. I didn't expect that you wouldn't read it all. I didn't expect that you wouldn't read it all out. So thank you. I guess I'd just like to add a couple of points from some of the concerns I heard here. I don't understand the issue with regard to made-on background checks and danger and things like that, most of all. I guess the reality is that sort of, however you want to look at it, the horse bolted from the barn with regard to short-term rentals as much as five years ago or more, and they have been operating for that time. I think based on that, I've heard very little in the way of actual detrimental effects that that has had on the community, other than, I guess, debatably, the rental issue, which I believe others can address better than me. But with regard to safety, impact, things like that, I have not seen anything substantiated that supports a danger there. With regard to the main concern, I think that the rules, what I call the front-end rules, do prevent, and the main concern I think most people would have, is with respect to non-owner-occupied properties. I definitely see that, and I see that pretty much as a main theme many people are making. And the law takes care of that. The code as revised takes care of that. The only carve-out is with respect to owner operated with a small carve-out for LLCs, and then the breakdown between hosted and non-hosted. So I think that with respect to the permitting, most of the fears I'm hearing voiced have been covered with respect to community impact, safety, et cetera. You heard my comments, my letter. I do believe there should be some sort of collaborative committee formed. I think it would be very useful. It can consist of a good cross-section of people, those that are concerned citizens, STR operators, responsible STR operators. And I think that would be a prudent thing to do, based on the various comments we are hearing. If, however, the, the board decides to carry on with the revised code and pass that code, I would urge that they very seriously put in some sort of hardship exception in that would account for what I raised in my letter, which are the real concerns for people who may have unwittingly, may unwittingly be eliminated from doing STRs, who in their situation should be allowed. I can elaborate on some examples, and if you know some of them, I don't want to go on too long, but, you know, one example would be businesses on Main Street in the V1 district. I mean, I think one solution for the LLC issue is simply allow corporate-owned properties within and around Main Street in the V1 area to incorporate short-term rentals with some measures, such as, I don't think it's necessary to have residential presence on the property, but perhaps authorized agent and/or someone there, a principal or an owner, who would be responsible for the operation of that short-term rental. It's already a business district. I don't see a big problem there. So, yeah, I guess that would be my main thing. If, if, if the board decides to pass this code, I would urge that there be some sort of codified, call it what you will, equitable exception, hardship exception incorporated into the code. My comments relating to tabling after November, don't take them the wrong way. You've been doing very, very good work. You're very qualified to do that work. I'm just commenting mostly on the timing issue. I really, in reality, see problems with respect, respect to implementation, smooth implementation, inspections, et cetera, within the timeframe given. You may disagree. I guess I'm a realist, and with any kind of new project, things always kind of drag on longer than you would expect. And that's, I think, all I really have to say, except I would also consider, I noticed an article from last year, Current, about Beacon. You know, Beacon, after resisting and not being able to agree, decided to allow owner-occupied short-term rentals without very many limitations, and made sure, and made sure that the main concern was covered, which was, you know, unmitigated property ownership, which could, you know, end up in buying out properties and just running, renting, running them as STRs. That's covered here. I would like to see lesser restrictions on the posted owner-occupied STRs. There was one other town I referred to, and that was Gardner. It was a, it's a hiking community. Again, they got together with a cross-section of community members and worked out a mutually acceptable code. Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Denise Friedley.
I've been pretty much fully apprised of the process, watching the videos and the Zoom meetings, and I just feel I'm very strongly about creating an advisory committee. This is touching and seriously impacting many lives, whether it be someone needing housing or someone feeling like, you know, they, they would rather not have it at all because of privacy and what, when they bought the house and what they're expecting. I, I just feel like every meeting, I've heard so many missed, there's been a lot of misinformation, and not purposely from anyone, but it's been, there's been a lot of misinformation, and there have been comments from board members during Zoom meetings about the STR, where they were, it was, it was very personal, such as, if you have the luxury to rent out a place, then you should blah, 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 or, I just don't like it. I think there's been a lot of personal and a lot of misinformation provided, and I think, or I know, speaking to all the short-term rental people as we meet and talk about how to go forward, it is clear that no one, not one of us, has any interest in hurting this community at all. Phil and I have had an STR for, we've been running it for three to four years now. We had one complaint that we know of, I mean, that's nothing, you know, we weren't even told about it, we heard about it. We had a complaint, it was an English couple, elderly couple, misused another piece of property on a land that's right next to ours, it looks like our backyard. So they sat at that person's table and they were upset about it. That's not worthy of, you know, of, oh, these dangerous people. We haven't had anyone like that out of all of the time we've been renting. It just seems like the assumption is, we're bad and we need to be controlled. And if we look back at that one phone call, that the, oh, a public meeting, the last caller apologized for the noise at her STR, the people at her SD created, and it was really kind of seemed like that was this, and it may be wrong, but it seemed like that was a straw that broke the camel's back for everyone. This loud party that happened, it was, this is what STR is all about, with people partying, and it's just crazy, and she came on and apologized profusely and felt so bad and had corrected the situation. That's what Cold Spring is about. That's exactly what Cold Spring is about. If we get an advisory committee, we would make sure to, to acknowledge your concerns and your concerns, and we could do it as a village. But I think if, when we, I'm listening to Joe Curdo and the letters that came in, and there's these last-minute wants or desires or thoughts, it's, it's just too quick. This is a big issue that needed a lot more time. And I think if you could incorporate all of us, and anyone who wants to volunteer into a committee to help manage this, because it's not going away, definitely not. It's not going away. It, it could be done in a much more, I don't know, village way, I should say. There's a lot of legalities that I think are going to be coming in play, because this is going on all over the country, so there's a lot of precedents that, that need to be listened to and looked at before we move forward. Thank you.
Bill Heffernan.
Phil Heffernan, 9 Church Street. Resident and building owner. Boy, I'm exhausted, so I can imagine you guys are. And I would be in a situation where money that I've worked for, for 31 years, equity I've worked for for 31 years, you are choosing to make illegal, restrain trade, so to speak. 90 days, that's all I can do. I've been running apartments for 31 years. I enjoy that, it turns out. I didn't know I would be a good landlord, but it turns out I'm a great landlord. But I've been running in the red for 28 of those years. But I could do it, because I had the big career income. Not so big, modest for an artist, but enough to cover the overhead, the repairs, the constant huge heating builds in an un insulated primarily building. What other things have driven me crazy? High mortgage rates. When I took it out, it was 90. So I am bringing that to your attention, because I got to live. And I would like to address the previous, previous comment from fellow resident Lillian. There ain't enough housing for anybody in Cold Spring. There ain't enough houses. There ain't enough apartments. That's the way it seems to go in America right now, or at least the Northeast. There's no, no place I could afford in Manhattan, though I grew up there. I can't solve the housing problem in Cold Spring. I can, however, suggest that the administration possibly alter some zoning or create other opportunities for rental housing in Cold Spring, on a much larger scale than three. Because I can assure you, when I put an apartment in Craigslist, one advertisement, the next day I got 10 people calling. So I'm not creating a housing shortage. I guess theoretically, it's possible in a place like New York City, that you could have clever individuals or crooked individuals going around amalgamating a lot of one-bedroom apartments into some sort of a huge enterprise and have major impacts on housing. I suppose you could say, in a small village like ours, three is a lot. Well, where's the 30 that we need to provide places for young people to get off and run it? I, I am a little self-serving here, I must admit. I am acting in some self-interest, that after 30 years, I should be able to chill and maybe not have to go through the humiliation of a lottery to enable me to continue my business that I've been doing for 31 years. And who says that people that want to stay for two nights are less worthy than people that want to stay for 31? And I object to that. I consider that to be highly discriminatory. However, I'm not going to get on a soapbox about that, because that's up for courts to do. But I will say this. The people that come to the village are self-selecting. They come up by train, they're millennials, they hike, they love the place, they spend a lot of money on food, and it's doing a lot of people a lot of good. And the impact on my antique treasure, every window in that joint is 150 years old. Imagine my installation. I'm going to start fixing, because now I got a few extra bucks to do it. And I don't know if you've looked at what windows cost nowadays, but you're looking at a grand between labor and material. Anyhow, I've spoken enough. I, I heartily agree with John. We're being rushed. This is not finished business. You might have crossed your last T and dotted your last I, but all it is, is a platform from which we can go forward without instigating many painful court proceedings. Because I'm afraid you stepped over the line in a number of different areas, and I don't need to go over it. Why spend money that way? Why don't you, well, my suggestion would be, start the committee that we pick for parking, trees, rec, et cetera. Get community input, which is highly valuable and reasonable, mush it all together, and maybe we've got something that we can all use, rather than setting this whole contentious environment afire, which I've never gone through in this town. Well, I actually have, and I don't like it when we're like that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Eliza Starbuck.
Hi, Eliza Starbuck. I live at 173 Main Street. I own a shop on Main Street, and I have no intention of renting out my houses as a short-term rental in the future or at any time, so. Mayor, trustees, thank you for all your hard work and time that you've put into this effort. It is not an easy task to measure and balance the needs of opposing forces, especially when you yourselves are so strongly impacted by the issue. Every single person I've spoken with on this issue has a different opinion on how much and who should be allowed to or not be allowed to do it. How do we write a code that asks everyone to give up a little to get a little? By making compromises that are neutral and still support the most dire of needs. Those needs are for some people to be able to make supplemental income from a large personal investment in their privately owned homes, and for village life and neighborhood and community character to be preserved for everyone who lives here. While this version of the code has made some strides towards the middle, it does not provide us with an equal or fair end product yet. I have heard the greatest concerns from residents who are aging and retiring here in homes where they may have raised their children, and they did not plan necessarily properly for exorbitant, exorbitant senior healthcare costs, the skyrocketing prices of goods and services that have surpassed their lifetime incomes and savings abilities, or just the rising costs of repairing and maintaining continually aging historic homes. What if they cannot afford to stay here without continuing to earn an income, but have become too old to continue professional careers? Do we care if they are forced to move away? It is true, it is not the job- It is true, it is not the job of the village or the police department to solve our personal life problems for us. But it is the government's responsibility to create fair and equal rules and structures that we can all work within and still survive with. In its purpose statement, the code proposal takes the position that neighbors renting out their homes to visitors may potentially be the cause of a loss of volunteerism, community participation, and a lack of residential housing. What if short-term rentals like Airbnb are not the central cause for a loss of the feeling of community connection or affordable housing for community-minded residents? I can think of a spectrum of factors that could cause these dynamics to arise for different individuals. My favorite of which is a culture that was raised on playing the game Monopoly. I'm joking about that. But that is an example of an extremely simple way of looking at a very complicated social issue that is affecting communities across the globe. Whatever the cause, I believe the greater solution in regulation involves allowing for lifestyle and life choice nuances, and even-handed regulations that are inclusive and easy to follow, track, and allow for reasonable enforcement. The code proposal has several elements that do not achieve that. These are related to, one, setting a limit on the number for permits that is based on a percentage rather than based on a real evaluation. Two, providing permits only through a lottery once a year. Three, limiting the number of nights per year a short-term rental may operate based on an arbitrarily low number that does not measure the current hosted amounts of nights. Four, refusing to allow permit holders to live within 300 feet of each other, which is not an element that any host can control. Five, extremely high and punitive fines for anyone who continues to or begins to operate a short-term rental and does not make the permanent lottery death warrant or final cut. And six, a requirement that hosts provide guests with off-street parking, and many residents in the village do not even have driveways, also an element that hosts do not always have to have control over, especially if guests can arrive by train or be required to do so. While these rules greatly reduce non-hosting neighbors from feeling the annoyance or disturbance of seeing, experiencing, or engaging with visitors on their block, they create instability and financial insecurity for those who host out of necessity. Greater flexibility and nuance in these terms would make the proposal more fair. The largest compromise given to permit applicants in this proposal is the low setting of the permit fee at $2.50, which to someone that is making that much a night as a host is of very little impact. Does that amount that would be collected by the village from permit holders, which is roughly, I don't know, $10,000, cover the cost of inspection, paperwork, and enforcement availability? Additionally, does that cover the cost of the highway department staff's labor and management of public restrooms and emptying the trashcans on Main Street that all visitors add to? Hosts is paying a low fee for the permit, but possibly not being allowed to get a permit, a compromise? This looks like a loss to both sides to me. I'm just gonna say ditto to Denise and John Lane's comments on having an advisory committee. I think that that is a really great idea. Last, this proposal does, however, have some elements that nearly all members of our community can applaud. That we are limiting this privilege to our residential neighbors and removing all possibility that real estate investors will buy homes to turn them into unregulated hotels and residential spaces, that is a huge success. This proposal also limits multiple resident properties of apartment buildings to only one short-term rental permit per property, which I hope will prevent apartment building owners from taking perfectly good apartments off the market. Under this proposal, they can provide market-rate apartments and still get an income boost with their one short-term rental unit, which is an example of a successful compromise. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my suggestions and for taking them into your consideration.
Thank you.
Finally, unless someone snuck in here and didn't sign up, and you're welcome to sign up if that happened, it is Dave Marzola.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, I feel like I keep coming up here to complain.
Can you tell Jeff your name?
Sorry, Jeff. It's me, Dave Jeff. I reside at 189 Lane Gate Road. We have a business at 75 Main Street. So yes, I feel like I keep coming up here to complain, so I'm gonna start with a different tactic this time. And, you know, I want to thank you guys for all the time you put into this. And specifically, I want to thank you for how much you guys obviously care about this community. Specifically, Trustee Early, Trustee Murphy, and Mayor Morandi, you guys have been up here since the first time I came to a meeting, you know, 10 years ago for whatever I came for, I feel like, I don't know if I'm right about that, but eight years, something like that, eight years ago. And, you know, I appreciate how much you guys care about this village, and, you know, I've gone back and forth about this. I thought a lot about it, and I understand why you guys are doing this. I get it. I know what you want to accomplish, and honestly, I agree with it. I really, I really do think that we could have a major issue with full residences in the residential districts being bought up, and it's already an issue, and it could, will increase, for 365-day Airbnbs. You know, it's a profitable business, and people with disposable income are gonna keep doing it, and we're gonna lose all the houses in there. And, you know, I've been to a lot of meetings. I've been to the Zoom public hearing, I've been to these public meetings, I've been to meetings with community members, you know, just talking about this, you know, on our own. And I'll tell you, one thing that I didn't see in any of those meetings were those owners of those residential houses in the residential communities that are 365-day-year rentals. Those people aren't at the meetings we have, they're not at these village meetings, they're not anywhere. Because those people, they're gonna be fine no matter what. They just made a killing renting their properties here during COVID, and if you guys pass this law, you know, everybody knows the village property prices have gone up. Those people will sell their houses as soon as this passes, they'll probably make $100,000, $200,000, and they're gonna be fine. But what I do see at the meetings are the community members, and, you know, and I'm proud to say I have a relationship with 90% of the people in this room. You know, the people for, the people against, those are the people that this affects. And so when I'm looking at what you guys are trying to accomplish, you know, and I remember Mayor Morandi, you said, you know, full houses, the proliferation of Airbnb houses in the residential community is what we want to end. And it's hard for me to argue with that. But what I think there's still room for is, you know, what I think you guys have loosely referred to as hosted rentals. And I think that there personally is room for somebody who has a residence that has one unit, and, you know, I've read this over many times with the changes, and I know that a lot of it says sit at one unit in a building. If it has multiple units, you can only do one unit. And I think that that's a good idea. I think it's okay for somebody to have one unit that they rent out, and I think there should be room for people to be able to rent out one unit uncapped, without a cap on the number of days, and without a cap on the number of people that are allowed to do it, because those people are gonna be very careful about who they're renting to. If you're living in New York City and you own a house, and somebody else is managing it, and you've never even met your neighbors, and you're renting it every day, you're not gonna care about how they treat your neighbors. But if that's your house and you're living there, you're gonna be very worried about who you select. And with Airbnb, with a lot of these platforms, you can be selected. You can refuse people, you can turn them down, and people do. So I think there's room for uncapped Airbnb in a single unit that's inside a residence. And also, I want to add that there's a lot in here about businesses, and in the B-1 district, I also think that you should be allowed to rent a single unit. You know, Trustee Murphy, excuse me, in the last meeting, I remember you saying that we don't, if I misquote you, it was something to the effect of, we don't want strangers in our residential community. But I feel like a bunch of these laws, in particular, a bunch of these aspects, Part K says only owner-occupied structures may be used for an SRT, STR. And that's defined as a place where someone lives. So I think there's also room for a business-occupied SRT within the B-1 district, because it'll be just like someone who's renting a single unit in their house. If someone owns a business, they're gonna be very picky about who they rent to upstairs, like we are. You know, my wife runs her business on the second floor. If we want to have an Airbnb on the third floor, you know, she's very careful about who she rents to, or it will affect her business. And her care and diligence in picking the right people has resulted in, you know, us having, you know, really nice people. Our neighbor even said on the other public hearing that she didn't even know that we were doing it, because we were so careful about who we were picking. So I don't think that it needs to be owner-resident occupied, business owner occupied. Also, I think that, you know, there should be room, as was noted, in the business district for an LLC to be the owner, because that's how a lot of those are structured. So, you know, I guess, you know, if, what I'm saying is, if you allow that and you don't cap the number of people, it hosted, business-hosted or residential-hosted Airbnbs, and then you give it a decent fee, as suggested by Eliza, I mean, you know, some people may groan when they hear me say this, but, you know, instead of $250, make it $500. And the people are gonna line up to get it, because they're gonna make it. They're gonna make it in a couple nights. All that money's gonna go to the village, and then with this new amount of village money that's brought in strictly by tourism, we would have enough money to say, be able to pay for the bathrooms. I know I was at a meeting where we were contesting whether or not we could afford $20,000 for the bathroom. If you open this up and allow people to have these Airbnb single units in their business or in their homes, it would pay for those bathrooms, you know, and then the incoming tourism revenue would be paying to help manage the tourism. So, you know, again, I just will sum up by saying that I agree with the motivation. I know why you guys are doing it. But I think that the people that are gonna be affected by this are gonna have no consequences, those people that aren't here. But the people that are here, the people that are doing it the right way, taking care to rent to nice people, to make sure that they manage it and keep an eye on it and uphold community character, you know, I think that this is actually punishing them. So I feel like it could be targeted a lot more to hit the objective it's really trying to hit, which is people purchasing full homes just for Airbnb within the residential district. I feel like there's a lot of room for you guys to help out all the other people that are really gonna keep an eye on their Airbnbs and manage it. So I know I went on for a long time, but thank you, and I hope you guys will reconsider that.
Did you miss anyone else? Thank you all for coming and your comments. We'll take them as considered.
You can't be heard. Sorry. You can't be heard.
What's that?
You can't be heard.
Yeah, can't hear.
Right, because he's not deciding.
We can talk between ourselves. Having a secret, talking about dinner, is there a review?
No, not tonight.
We're discussing whether to keep the meeting or not. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good job.
Good night, all. Good night, all. Good night, all. Okay. Continue on here. Next, we have Resolution 38, 2021. I'll make a motion, or what do we think we're gonna do on this one? Set a date for the public hearing?
Yes.
Is the date in here?
Yes.
So this is Resolution Number 38, 2021, setting a date and time for public hearing on proposed local laws amending the following chapters of the Village Code, 36, brushing weeds, not weed, 48, dumpsters and roll-up containers, 52, floodplain management, 59, littering, 87, peace and good order, 93, recycling, 97, sewers, 122, trees, 130, water, and adding the following chapters, 42, fences and walls, 81, outdoor lighting standards, and 106, deep slope protection. I'll make a motion to set the dates for Resolution 38, 2021.
Second.
Whereas the Board of Trustees, the Village of Cold Spring, seek to update the Village Code by amending chapters 36, 48, 52, 59, 87, 93, 97, 122, 130, and adding chapters 42, 81, and 106. Whereas the Village Board wishes to set a time and place for public hearing to consider amending the following chapters of the Village Code, 36, brushing weeds, 48, dumpsters and roll-up containers, 50, floodplain management, 59, littering, 87, peace and good order, 97, recycling, or 93, recycling, 97, sewers, 122, trees, 130, water, and adding the following chapters, 42, fences and walls, 81, outdoor lighting standards, and 106, deep slope protection. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law project in accordance with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and Part 617 of the Regulations Implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project. And let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by Village Board wanted to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed amendment to the above-listed chapters in review. Any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accordance with SECR on Thursday, August 12, 2021, at 6:30 PM at Village Hall, 85 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. And for the resolve that the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Philip Woods?
Yes.
And Mayor Morandi? Yes. Next is Resolution 39, 2021. I will make a motion to, this is to, sorry. Classified. So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 39, 2021.
Second.
Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees is considering adoption of amendments to nine chapters of Village Code, including chapters 36, 42, 48, 59, 87, 93, 97, 122, and 130, then the Village of Cold Spring, Putnam County, New York. And whereas none of the proposed nine-chapter amendments involve the creation of new programs in the Village or constitute a major rewatering of priorities, and whereas each proposed amendment is designed to update the respective chapter to comply with state law or other identified issues related to continuing agency, administration, and management, and whereas after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYCRR, 617.4, and five, the Village Board has determined that the proposed adoption of the above-said amendments to each of the nine chapters is a Type II action that meets the thresholds founded six New York CRR, 617.5, C26. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board hereby declares that no further review under SECR of the amendments proposed to chapters 36, 42, 48, 59, 87, 93, 97, 122, and 130 of the Village Code is required. Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
Trust, uh, Mayor Morandi? Aye. Almost a morgue again. It's contagious. Okay, I'll make a motion to, for the classifying amendment to Chapter 52, an addition of Chapters 81 and 106 of the Village Code as unlisted actions under SECR. as unlisted actions under SEACRA, Resolution number forty, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Whereas the Village Coles from Board of Trustees is considering the amendment to Chapter fifty-two floodplain management, the addition of Chapter eighty-one outdoor lighting standards, and Chapter one-oh-six, steep slope protection in the Village Code within the Village of Coles from Putnam County, New York. And whereas, an environmental assessment form, EAF, dated seven, twenty-two, twenty-one, was prepared to comply with the requirements of SEACRA and address the potential environment, environmental impacts of the amendment's adoption. And whereas, after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYCRR, six-one-seven-point-four and five, Village Board has determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action, because it does not meet any of the Type One threshold found in six NYCRR, six-one-seven-point-four. And whereas, and examining, after examining the EF, EAF, the Village Board has determined that there are no other local and/or federal agencies involved in this matter. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board hereby declares a sub-lead agency for the review of this action. Be further resolved that the determination of significance will be made at such time as all information has been received by the Village Board to enable to determine whether the action will or will not have a sufficient effect on the environment. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Aye.
Okay. Next, I'll make a motion to, uh, declare, what is this, okay? Resolution number forty-one, twenty-twenty-one, issuing a negative declaration for amendment to Chapter fifty-two, in addition of chapters eighty-one and one-oh-six through the Village Code. Make a motion to adopt. Thank you.
Second.
Whereas the Village of Colespring Trust, uh, Board of Trustees is the SEACRA lead agency for conducting environmental review for the amendment of one chapter in addition of two chapters to the Village Code, including floodplain management, outdoor lighting, and steep slopes protection within the Village of Colespring, Putnam County, New York. And whereas there are no other involved local or federal agencies pursuant to SEACRA, and whereas the Village Board has reviewed the environmental assessment form for the action, including the Part One, Part Two, and Part Three dated seven, twenty-two, twenty-one, the probable, probable environmental effects of the action against the criteria of determining significance, and has considered such impacts as disclosed in the EAF. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board adopts the findings and conclusions relating to the probable environmental effects contained within the attached EAF and negative declaration, and authorize the mayor to execute the EAF and file a negative declaration in accordance with the applicable provisions of law. And be it further resolved that the Village Board authorize the mayor to take such further steps as might be necessary to discharge the lead agency's responsibilities on this action. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods? Mayor Morandi?
Aye.
Next, Resolution number forty-two, twenty-twenty-one, establishing a mandatory referendum to opt out of the state-licensed establishments to permit onsite cannabis consumption. I'll make a motion to establish this mandatory referendum.
Second.
Whereas the Village of Colespring Board of Trustees on July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, adopted Local Law zero-three dash twenty-twenty-one, adding to the Village Code, Chapter seventy-three, opting out of licensing onsite cannabis consumption establishments in the Village of Colespring. And whereas that pursuant to Cannabis Law one-thirty-one, Local Law zero-three dash twenty-twenty-one is subject to permissive referendum, and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of State until the applicable time period that elapsed to file a petition or, or a referendum has been conducted approving this local law. And whereas pursuant to Village Law Section nine dash nine-oh-eight, the Village Board of Trustees will hold a mandatory referendum on this proposition at the next regular, next regular general election to be held on November second, two thousand twenty-one, and therefore eliminating the need for this submission of a petition to hold a referendum. And whereas, an environmental assessment form, EAF, dated July twenty-twenty-one, was prepared to comply with the requirements of SEACRA and address the potential environmental impacts of the chapter's adoption. And whereas, after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYCRR, six-seventeen-point-four, the Village Board determined that the proposed action is unlisted action, because it does not meet any of the Type One thresholds found in six NYCRR, six-seventeen-point-four. And now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby confirms that it will be the lead agency in accordance with SEACRA with respect to the review of the proposed actions, opting out of licensing onsite cannabis consumption establishments in the Village Colespring. And let it be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby confirms this issuance of a negative declaration for the proposed action under SEACRA, as it will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, and environmental impact statement is not required. And let it be further resolved that on November second, two thousand twenty-one, the general election will also include a public referendum on the proposition to opt out of licensing onsite cannabis consumption establishment. And let it be further resolved, the Village Clerk is hereby authorized to immediately forward the following proposition language to Putnam County Board of Elections, so that it is included on the November second, twenty-twenty-one ballot. Should the Village of Colespring prohibit state-licensed establishments that permit the onsite consumption of cannabis? Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods? Mayor Morandi?
Aye.
Finally, uh, Resolution forty-three dash twenty-twenty-one, establishing a mandatory referendum to opt out of state-licensed retail cannabis dispensary. I'll make a motion to establish the mandatory referendum.
Second.
Whereas the Village of Colespring Board of Trustees on July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, adopted Local Law zero-four, twenty-twenty-one, adding to the Village Code, Chapter seventy-four, opting out of licensing retail cannabis dispensaries in the Village of Colespring. And whereas that pursuant to Cannabis Law one-thirty-one, Local Law zero-four dash twenty-twenty-one is subject to permissive referendum, and thus may not be filed with the Secretary of State until the applicable time period has elapsed to file a petition or a referendum has been conducted approving this local law. And whereas pursuant to Village Law Section nine dash nine-oh-eight, the Village Board of Trustees will hold a mandatory referendum for this proposition at the next regular general election to be held on November second, twenty-twenty-one, and therefore eliminating the need for the submission of a petition to hold a referendum. And whereas, an environmental assessment form, EAF, dated July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, is prepared to comply with the requirements of SEACRA and address the potential environmental impacts of the chapter's adoption. And whereas, after complying these thresholds contained, sorry, after comparing the thresholds contained in six NYCRR, six-one-seven-point-four, the Village Board has determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action, because it does not meet any of the Type One thresholds found in six NYCRR, six-seventeen-point-four. And now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby confirms that it will be the lead agency in accordance with SEACRA with respect to review of the proposed action, opting out of licensing in retail cannabis dispensaries in the Village of Colespring. And let it be further resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby confirms this issuance of a negative declaration for this proposed action under SEACRA, as it will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, and an environmental impact statement is not required. And let it be further resolved that on November second, two thousand twenty-one, the general election will also include a public referendum on the proposition to opt out of licensing retail cannabis dispensary. And let it be further resolved, the Village Clerk is hereby authorized to immediately forward the following proposition language to Putnam County Board of Elections, so that it is included on the November second, twenty-twenty-one ballot. And the wording would be, should the Village of Colespring prohibit license, prohibit state-licensed retail cannabis dispensaries? Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Aye.
Anything else?
Just reminders, Thursday is executive session at six o'clock.
Executive session at six o'clock, code update review for Chapter one-thirty-four, immediately following executive session.
That's it. When do we want to have a discussion about Chapter one-hundred?
Whenever we can fit it in. I don't know what we have, what's next?
Well, we also have bills that we have to pay on Thursday night.
We build in the masterfeast, adoption of the masterfeast schedule.
Well, I don't wanna do it Thursday anyway.
Okay. Do you wanna give more thought?
Just a little bit.
To the comments?
Yeah.
To one-hundred, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
The meeting after that on August third, tentatively, the parking committee is gonna present to the Board of Trustees, um, we'll have minutes, I'm sure there'll be other things that come up that can...
When was that one, sorry, which day?
August third.
Next Tuesday.
August.
Tuesday?
First, first Tuesday.
And the week after that will be the monthly.
So the second, or first Thursday, we don't have anything?
No.
No?
No.
All right, why don't we put the discussion on that date?
Um, I will be, are you voting that night? I'll be away that night.
Uh, I don't know.
That'll be August fifth.
What's that?
August fifth, that'd be...
Would you say Parking Committee is coming?
CBA or plan, one of them will be meeting that night also.
Okay, well, would, um, okay, um, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Yeah, to look at the schedule.
When is the sched, when, when's people's vacations or?
That's the one week I'm out, is the second to the fifth.
Not away till next year.
I thought you were out the following week as well.
I was going to be, but I, there's too much, there's a monthly meeting, and then you wanted to do a, a code hearing on the twelfth. So I decided not to do the second piece, so I wouldn't miss that.
I probably won't be here on the tenth, but I will be here on the twelfth, for sure.
Not on that tenth, but the twelfth you will be?
Yes.
There's a public hearing.
The twelfth is.
The twelfth.
The tenth is regular monthly meeting, right?
Do you have any plans, Miss Ryan? Okay, uh, we'll put, put something together.
Uh, Jeff, you're gonna put the, um, you know, it's about the August twelfth public hearing?
Yep.
On the website, and if we're not getting on Facebook.
Absolutely, soon as he pops it up.
Great. I have, um, I have penciled on the seventeenth code with a question mark. That was a, if needed. Is that a possibility for one-hundred? What, what's planned for the seventeenth?
The, the thing with one-hundred is, you wanna get it either moving or dead. And letting it, why?
Well, we can discuss it right now if you want.
Okay.
I mean, what are, what are people's feelings? Um, one, I mean, I just like, just right off the bat, um, you know, insulted by a lot of things that are said. And, uh, you know, that like, we actually are looking at this as being, you know, in a biased way, in a personal way, and it's like, of course, we all have opinions on it. I have opinions on it, and I have, you know, I have actual, you know, experience from it. And that's not saying, you know, that, you know, I've let that, you know, bring me to an extreme, that's for sure. Um, and I'm not trying to do away with them, but I do, have been able to experience the, kind of the downside of them, and also the upside of them. And, you know, and, and all the laws we were looking at, there, I mean, there's laws, oh, it's not like we're the only ones that have a law, or have come up with some discriminating punishing law. I mean, there are a lot that are more restrictive, there are some, and there are others that are not, you know? So, when people, you know, are saying that, or that, you know, we've rushed this, it's like, we've been going over this, and I've started putting this together years ago, and, you know, and forming it from all of the other, you know, codes that I found, and understanding what, you know, what people wanted. And what people wanted initially from the meeting was that they wanted some, you know, some supplemental income, which is not the case here. It's, it's turning into like, this is what I need to make my living, to keep what I have. So if I have a three-story brownstone, you know, which we don't have in the city, in the village, but, you know...
Well, pretty close.
But I mean, it's like saying that you have something or own something, and now you can't afford it, and somehow, that makes it right, you know? I, you know, just, you know, supplemental is like different than actually becoming a big business so that you can afford what you have, or, you know...
So, just as a comment, when the special board began its work on the comprehensive plan, and then the, oh, the...
Pardon me? When you were twelve years old?
When I was twelve years old, and when God was a kid. Um, there were a number of meetings that were held. I can remember one meeting in particular where a gentleman who lived on a church street, this was years ago, said, and, and he established the basis for, uh, for the need for overnight accommodations, which is what they were called then. He said he, he wasn't able to afford the cost of hotels in the area, and he, what he really wanted was inexpensive places for his family to come to stay so that they could visit him. And it, that was the basis for overnight accommodations. That is not what it has become. It has become a business. And, and if I go back and, and look at it, at what he was looking for, he couldn't afford now what is being charged for short-term rentals. It's just not an affordable option. But, so, but discussion about overnight accommodations beginning with two thousand six, two thousand seven, was my point.
Couple of things I heard tonight that I, I thought might, you know, might make a part. One was, and it was in Evan Hudson's email, that maybe, uh, when we're talking about LLCs, that it should be maybe the majority owner should be the person on board, or somebody controlling the LLC rather than just anybody. And I thought that was something we could look into. Um, a couple of people mentioned that we should raise the, um, the fees on it, and I've heard that before, I've heard that a number of times. So even though we've raised the fees, and they, they seem to be anxious for us to raise the fees again.
They, they wanna raise the fees, but lower the fines.
Right, they wanna raise the fees, they also wanted to say that, uh, we can raise the fees, so therefore we can increase, uh, our businesses. Um, taking into account Mr. Heffernan's, um, discussion here tonight. Uh, if he's been doing this for thirty-one years, I, I apologize, but I doubt very much that he's been in the rent for thirty-one years.
He's been renting, like, seven church street for quite some time.
Denise said three to four years as an STR, which is different. Um, I, sort of, I don't, I don't take offense, but, um, they talked about the letters that came in the last minute, and I was, Mr., I guess it was Evan Hudson, who said that the people who, um, the citizens who, uh, you know, are not really for this, sort of expect us to have their backs. I'm not always a, uh, in agreement with that, but the fact that people came in tonight is not necessarily the last one. They've had something to say, they've been watching this, whatever, um, you know, so, um... I don't think there's a lot for us to change at this point. I think we need to go forward with it. Those who want us to have a group to sort of overlook this, oversee this thing, um, they keep talking about having this group, but I've only heard about having this group of people who are running STRs, um, not, you know, people who aren't. And at this point, I think getting the law through, if, if the group wants to come in next year or the year after they wanna do something else. I understood, um, Kathy, um, Kathy Bogartis' point about, um, enforcement. And I don't, I don't think, um, you know, I don't think she was, she was, I don't agree totally with the fact that the police is gonna go in and count the days and all. That's not what the police are gonna do. But I do understand, uh, enforcement, and in most, I think in most communities where there are STRs, um, nobody should have counted the days. We're, we're giving the permits, we're assuming people are going to be honest as best as they can, and if they're not, the neighbors may complain, the neighbors may not, and that's the best we can do with it at this point. So that's sort of my two cents, but no.
One, one thing, just, uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I did just one thing on the enforcement. I am talking to one guy that we interviewed for, uh, for Charlotte's position to see, he'll, he will, you know, he was, I think he went on vacation in the summer or something, he wasn't available. So I, I told him what we had, and I'm gonna try to get somebody that'll deal, if we, if this is passed, to just deal with short-term rentals. You know, he's certified, he can do, he can do the inspections, we can pay him part-time, and, uh, and I don't see why it would be hard for him to get, do a lot of these at one time. It's, I don't think they're gonna be, I mean, they'll be somewhat time-consuming, but I don't, I agree, I don't think that Charlotte, Charlotte definitely is not gonna be able to do it.
And, um, the fact that Phil Heffernan is like, I'm humiliated because I have to have a lottery, um, that's a little bit over the top. But, sorry.
I also took the point from Evan's letter, Fran, about the, um, I can't remember how he said it, the ownership, the percentage ownership?
The LLC.
In the LLC, that that should be the person who is resident in the house. Um, I think that sort of takes the idea that Dave brought forward and, um, gives it, gives it clear direction on the why. The why for it?
You're talking about Dave or some?
No, Dave Morandi first asked to have the, to consider LLCs if the, if one of the members of the LLC were resident in the house. And Evan's language, just not seeing right in front of me right here, takes that concept and gives useful language around it. So I'd like to consider that language. I share the concern about fees being, initial fees for permits being low, because I do see short-term rentals as an opportunity for both residents and the village to benefit from the tourism economy in ways that we don't already. And I'm concerned that we haven't thought of all the costs in. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that, Tweeps, you were working on the brochure this week, on a, not a...
Fact sheet.
A fact sheet for residents. And I feel like that's something that would make the law accessible to people in the rental is to make clear what it is that the rules and regulations are trying to achieve in terms of maintaining and reducing neighborhood impacts, maintaining character and reducing neighborhood impacts. And I feel that that should be a village responsibility, and we should be providing those, that information in print format to property owners to share with their tenants, so that everyone's, not their tenants, but their short-term rentals, so that everyone's clear on what the community expectations are around the rental. So I guess I would like to look a little more at what the permitting fee is. You know, it's tough, it's a tough balance. We don't want to end up, you know, there's a reason people call Lake Placid Lake Plastic. And when you visit Chatham, you can't drive down the side, can't drive down the street, because it's packed with so many people, and very few residents are there. And that would be a disaster for Cold Spring.
That is the way Cold Spring is now.
It is on the weekends.
Yes.
But I think that the preservation of residential housing stock is critical. I do, I do think that the area where we need to be focusing is on the unhosted. I think that's the larger problem. When people are hosted, it's their property, they're invested in their neighbors, and the impact on their neighbors. And I, I'm still thinking about how, how that piece fits in. I'm pleased with the direction that the legislation has gone in terms of controlling LLCs and controlling non-resident, non-hosted, short-term rentals. But I'm still mulling the other elements over in my head.
I just think that we, we went, we've gone over this and have actually adjusted ourselves from comments. I don't know what more, I mean, I personally don't need to hear anymore. I've heard everything, we've kind of made adjustments. We've heard the argument, we've, we've, we created a law actually to accommodate, you know, you know, hosted and unhosted, and considered everything that was part of that. I don't know what else we...
Are you open to further discussion on the permit?
No, I'm not.
Not the fee? I'm asking about the fee. Fran raised the same question.
On the fee, I'm fine if they want to raise the fee, I'm fine with raising the fee if everyone thinks that's good, and...
It just would be good to have, to have an actual, as Mrs. Bogartis stated, an actual accounting of what we think the real costs are, and not just, not just the issuance of the permit, but the inspection. I know Marie did an estimate. But are we really, are we thinking about things like how we roll out, how we roll out the law and make it accessible? Is things like providing fact sheets for owners, those kinds of practical costs, things that should come out of the revenue, so that it's revenue for the village to offset those costs?
So the fact sheet, which is identified in the law, is fairly straightforward. It's...
Which we pretty much Tweeps has given us.
Yeah, so we've got L.
Right, but so, so we raised the question in earlier discussion about who should provide it, and Dave suggested that it should be a chamber expense.
Not the fact sheet.
No, 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 the fact sheet, the fact sheet is...
We're talking two, I think there's two different things we definitely have to separate. One, in the, in the law, it's not talking about a brochure on how to be a nice person. We're talking about what, you know, putting information there that people will need, who to call, you know, if there's, when to put garbage out, bring it in, things that are needed, not like, you shouldn't be partying later on at night, or please be considerate, maybe you're not in the right, whatever would be in a brochure.
Well, those are the things we're concerned about for neighborhood impacts.
Well, and that could go into a brochure, but that's not the fact, that's not...
Not the fact sheet.
Not what we're, you know...
So, so I guess I had put forward, having looked at Palm Springs, a document that that municipality puts forward that achieves both of those goals in a single document, and presents the short-term renter with the contact information they need and the expectations for their behavior, for lack of a better term, or their neighborliness while they are in the property. It's, if those are the things that we're hearing concerns about, and we have concerns about in terms of noise and parking and garbage, why not make it easy for folks to understand that while you're here in our community, our expectation is this? And you as a host, that also reinforces to the host what our expectation is for the host, in terms of being good neighbors.
So we, I think like a 21 at last count back and forth on this, I don't agree with it. I think we should have a fact sheet. I'm not totally against the brochure, but I don't want it in the law, if we want...
Doesn't need to be in the law.
Well, you're saying it should be, and that Palm Springs has it.
No, no, Dave.
You've said that a hundred times.
Dave, what I'm saying is, I'm asking for the payment, that for, that the cost, the permit include the cost of things like producing informational documents that will be helpful to renters and helpful to hosts for setting expectations for conduct while they are guests in our village. So it's just, I'm not saying put it in the code, I'm saying, have we set the permit fee high enough to cover the full cost, the actual full cost, not just the initial inspection, but the full cost of carrying it out? And are we, are we participating in that, in the tourism economy as a village in a way that offsets the actual costs of the short-term rentals?
Okay, well, first of all, I think that, well, I just thought, I heard, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood you when you were talking about Palm Springs, how they put it in to both the facts and the thing, and that's in the law. So I misinterpreted that, I thought that's what you're saying we should do. Second, let's take tourism as a whole in the village. If we're going to look at tour, if we're going to look at this that way, then how, what, we should stop tourism in Cold Spring, because the money we put out, and the amount of money that's going into keeping tourism going, definitely doesn't cover what's going on, has nowhere near the cost. Doesn't, doesn't take care of the bathrooms, it doesn't take care of the garbage that our guys have to do on Sundays and down at the river. None of this is taken, is compensated at all.
Well, that's the point, that's the point I'm making. None of it's compensated at all. So are we setting the permits?
My point is that not everything is going to be totally covered, if it isn't, and I'm not sure it won't be.
The short-term rentals should not be covering tourism costs, because tourists come, and most of them are not going to be...
I'm not suggesting that it would cover all of the costs. I'm saying, is the number high enough to provide some reasonable offset for the additional visitors that overnight accommodation bring to the village?
So if we have six years...
But what are, list what those are. Besides the, okay, it's going to cost us, first we're going to have to do an inspection, okay, $50. We're going to have to do some paperwork or whatever, say another hour, that's $30. And we're going to have to print it out, that's 10 cents, I don't know what it is, I'm being facetious. So what other costs are there? Because garbage will be the same, water and sewer will be the same, all of the other impacts are going to be the same.
So...
So what are the costs? What are the costs?
So I'm trying to answer you.
What's that?
I'm trying to answer you.
Okay.
So Mrs., one of the issues that Mrs. Bogartis raised as a financial concern, and Marie just raised it now, a moment ago, was additional policing.
But that has nothing to do with short-term rentals.
If you're saying that the, I'm unclear how, when you, when you point to violations of a noise ordinance, and, and calling, having to call the police and have additional calls to the police, how that has nothing to do with short-term rentals?
But I don't think, I mean, at that point, we're, we're falling right into what everybody accused us of tonight, is that we're saying short-term rentals are no good because of the noise problems. It's not, I don't think the noise problem is such that we need to worry about adding more money, because everybody who runs short-term rentals, we're going to need to call the police on them, and that's sort of what we're sounding like, and I know that's not what you mean.
That's not what I mean at all.
That's not what you mean.
I think there's not going to be any additional cost for a police.
Yeah.
We have police in the village that are, you know, in the village and, and basically to protect us, or if need be called to, you know, come to the aid of the residents.
So what do you expect to pay the additional inspector? You said that you need an additional inspector.
The additional inspector would be paid per diem.
Okay, and where's that coming from?
It's going to come out of the $250. We've already established that an inspector is going to cost money. So what I'm asking is, you said that there were other things you need to think about. What are the other costs that you think that will be, you know, come from us implementing this law? And I don't think there are any.
What about additional administrative help and the additional...
Administrative help.
And there might be...
For processing of allegations, the lottery, et cetera.
Add whatever, $30.
I would add $30, so that, or we could say that the inspection, if we pay somebody $30 an hour, they're going to have the inspection done, but then they're going to have to do paperwork, and there'll be some doing, so that's a couple of hours, say three hours. If you want to go four, that's $120, and then another 50, that's $170. And we're charging $250, we're going to come out of this late.
We're charging 50 for the application and 250 for the permit, so it's a total of five, three...
And people have suggested that we raise it to 500, which I have no problem with if that's...
That's what I'm talking about, and everyone just yelled at me about it.
We're not, we're not being, I don't think you're being clear on what you're saying. You're saying you need more time, because we have to know what the expenses are going to be, and I think we do know what the expenses are going to be. I think I do. I think it's going to be under $250.
Okay, so why not document that? Why not make, why not make a lot of...
But we're not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't document it or whatever, I think we're way off track.
To know that we've got the right number.
But that doesn't have to be in the code. We can come up with a number and give it to the, or, and say, this is where it's coming from, if they want to know.
I thought we were having a discussion about the comments the public made this evening.
I, the public meeting tonight was for comments on the, on the additional changes we made to the short-term rental.
And some of the comments that were made were related to the permit.
With regarded... But in the permit, there's nothing about how much it's cost, or how that, where that comes from. It's not going to be in the permit, I mean, in the code.
That was just a verbal comment.
That's correct, it's in the, it's in the fee schedule. So now I understand why you're not wanting to have that conversation this evening.
Can I just ask, sorry, in John Wayne's 25-page comments here, he mentioned, and someone else mentioned, setting up something for hardship exceptions. At first, I, my mind was, no, we're not going to do that. After that, my mind was, I can see, you know, major situations where somebody may want to get...
So he referred to hardship, economic hardship, exceptions in zoning. We do not have any in our zoning code. The only place that I'm aware of where a hardship exception is found is in...
64.
Chapter 64. It's not in planning, it's not in zoning.
And we can't really base this law on, hey, people have hardship because of COVID, because COVID is a thing, it just happens, and it's not a continuing...
Well, also, the bar for hardship, when it does exist in land use law, the bar is very high, and establishing it is, is complex.
And I don't think that we're in any position to say that we're going to make a determination of that.
We're not going to put hardship in the zoning, in 100 or in zoning.
So at this point, I don't see, other than the LLC, maybe make a last-minute adjustment to the LLC.
I agree with that, Fran.
On who, you know, who in the LLC is going to be the person who's going to...
What I could do is I can communicate, I can communicate to John tomorrow, not John Wayne, but John first, to see if he'll recommend any change in the wording.
And hopefully they won't be substantial, we don't have that on the other end.
Yeah, and I think at this point, I mean, it's not, you know, the law, when we pass it, isn't set in stone forever and ever and ever. We tried, as well, we said at the beginning, we tried it for a year. If things need to be adjusted, they'll be adjusted.
Well, would you want to vote on it, um, what's your proposed timeline?
Can we vote on it tonight?
Oh, do we want, did you want to talk to John about the LLC?
No, but I don't think that that's appropriate. We didn't tell the public that we were voting on it tonight, and we can change this.
We could have voted on it tonight, when they're, either way.
But if we were going to do that, we should have done that when the folks were in the room.
I think, did you want to talk to John about the LLC?
I think that's a minor change.
What about the fee, the name of the fee?
Fee is not in the...
Oh, sorry, it's in the fee schedule, sorry.
Oh, can we vote on it?
The other one I want to just make sure on is the one-time short-term rental, should we add, is this something that, I mean, tell me, I'm not that clear. Should we add that these permits are, you know, they're not, people that have permits aren't eligible for this one-time also, or is that clear? Like, so the one-time short ones, say that the rentals for one time is, is this for 14 a year? So you could get a short, a one-time short-term rental permit, but it doesn't say anything about if you have a permit already, if you can also have that.
Right, yeah, that needs to be clarified. Somebody said something.
Joseph Curdo?
Joe Curdo, yeah, he, what, what, can I ask to see if I understood what he was saying in the same way that everyone else did?
I'm not sure what he said.
I thought what he was suggesting was, if someone gets a 14-day, if someone gets a permit and they can use up to 14 days, can we make it flexible so that you could say rent out a weekend and then have your, can I ask you not to make that...
What?
I'm sorry. I'm being agoracious, okay.
I think what Joe is saying is I might just, just kind of...
I'd like to finish, if I may.
I think I could get to the point quicker, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
Be my guest.
No, go ahead, say, drag it out, man. Bring it to...
No, go ahead.
No, explain it.
I'm sorry, done.
No, I'm sorry, explain it.
That you could use your two days in a weekend, and then have the remaining 12 days available to you at other times, and why should the village matter? Why should the village care when those 12 days are used? That's what I think he needs, is that what you're understanding?
I agree.
And do we care when people use the other 12 days?
Yes, because then he's gone from a one-time to a hosted.
No, he's not, if he's saying, if he's saying that you're not, I understood it to mean, I'm away, I'm away for those 14 days.
No, no, I, the way, sorry, the way I read it is he's like to use two nights here, two nights there, two nights everywhere.
That it would be 14 nights, that the 14 that we're allowing could be split up into seven, two-day...
It was a bank of 14 days.
A bank, okay.
Exactly.
And that, well, that then becomes a hosted, I read that as, it's no longer one time, it's hosted. It's hosted for 14.
Or hosted, but it's...
It's...
Okay, it's not clear whether noise is going to be there, you're right.
But that wasn't what we wrote that into the law for. We wrote this into the law for vacation.
So your point, your point, I think, is if you were to allow him, allow that scenario to go forward, then you're ending up with an additional short-term rental?
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
Hosted.
Understood.
What you said, Dave, was it needs to be clear in the law, or maybe Marie said, that the one-times are not connected to the hosted or unhosted, that's totally separate, you can't have both.
I wouldn't be opposed to two seven-day consecutive.
Originally, we had said it was one.
It was one?
We originally said one week, and then it got changed to 14 consecutive. So I think one time we need two things, seven days each.
So we could do two seven, seven days.
Right, and...
Would that allow someone to still have the option to do the 14 days consecutively? Could you do seven-seven or?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, right, either or. And then we need to add, can't do, can't also to get, can't also get hosted on hosted.
And then we got to just clarify the LLC, the majority owner.
Yeah, I think the wording that Evan stated was pretty good.
So can we have this discussion on Thursday?
So, I don't know. Tweeps, have you had anything else? Sorry, I don't think we got to you.
No, no, I, I'm digesting, I'm digesting. So the answer is no.
Has everybody, does everyone think that we've, we've done, I really think, and I've tried to make this as fair as possible with what we know and how short-term rentals are done. Does everyone feel that way? Or is people feeling that we're punishing someone, or ignoring, or, I just think we've tried to accommodate everyone, and that's impossible. We've got like five people that are not happy with us, maybe, out of the whole, you know, out of their whole community. Not to say that they don't have arguments, I'm just saying, it's like, I, I don't think we can accommodate everyone.
I think it's really hard, because we're at the leading edge of a new area of law. And there isn't a lot, but we've done, we have done, all of us individually and collectively, a tremendous amount of research, and tried to bring together what we thought were the best elements of different municipalities ordinances. It's never going to be perfect in the first round.
No, I think we, I think we have done more than our due diligence. I mean, we have, we have looked at how many municipalities that you come up with. I have stacks of my home, but I'll pay as I want.
One other comment that I would make is the four or five-page letter, the union of hosted here.
Isn't it just sent by John tonight?
It's just, but the heading, Cold Spring Union of Hosted... It's just, but the heading, heading, Cold Spring Union of Hosted Airbnb Residents. Tonight, we had John, we had Phil and Denise, we had David Marzolo, we had at least three of the seven or eight couples that were part of that, that used. So my point is a very strong presence tonight from the union folks.
And they tend to come on mass, although if we had listened to Phil, we would have accepted.
Well, I thought David made an interesting point at the end, David Marzolo, in which he said, the people who are invested as resident owners, recognizing that he is not, the people who are invested as resident owners are the folks who are largely in the room and are going to be accountable.
I wasn't quite sure what he was getting at.
I think what he was getting at when.
It sounded like he was talking about people who were renting for a year.
You know, I, I understood him to be talking about the people who are committed to good outcomes are the people who are hosted, who are hosts and resident hosts. That's what I understood him to be saying. And I thought that was a reasonable point.
That, I don't think that they were represented totally. I mean, for one thing, Eliza's saying there's a hundred and some SDRs in the village.
Well, when you've searched, when you've searched the village on the websites, there are, it varies what's, what's offered and what isn't. And sometimes the number's higher and sometimes it's lower.
But it's also not, it's not broken down at the village. Cold Spring can mean Garrison. Cold Spring can mean, can be Nelson. It could also be.
Some, some platforms provide a mapping.
And we've also, and I also contacted the same person that Eliza contacted and she could not give me a, a number, whereas Eliza said, there was a definite number. That's not the same answer I got from this woman. And I wrote her back a number of times and asked her, and I still don't have it because she can't confirm how many rentals are in the village.
Yeah, I think it does vary.
From Eliza, was it?
Well, she could say it varies, but it's like, you know, 70 to 80 or 60 to 100, whatever. But, you know, they must have some data. They're not willing to cooperate.
And that's, we've done our best to accommodate what we see. Yes, you can do it all year long. Unfortunately, what I found interesting with Eliza is that she, at least I got her saying that you can really only do one per, per building.
That's what I thought.
And she was sort of looking at Phil when she said that.
Yes. And David said that as well, that he felt, he was supportive of that as well for the preservation of rental housing.
Phil, Phil has plenty of space that he could rent for, you know, regular full-time.
I had a lot of difficulty understanding what Eliza was saying.
Yeah, I wasn't too sure. I didn't have the code in front of me, but she was picking out points and I made a note for myself to, to listen to it again just because I wanted to have, listen to it with the code in front of me. But anyway.
So we'll have it on the.
Yeah, we can listen to it on YouTube.
We'll have it on the agenda for Thursday.
What do you want on the agenda?
Yes.
The vote.
Vote on chapter one.
So you want a resolution?
Yes.
Adopting?
Yes.
This as law?
As amended.
So we are not, we're, in the meantime, we'll have Fran, who, which of you, you're calling John?
Yes.
And we'll have that language before Thursday, we hope.
Well, we have to hear back from the county first.
Right. But we can pass the resolution without, we can't enact it until we hear back from the county.
Do you have to put the most recent version up on the website, I assume?
No, the most recent version, the changes that were discussed tonight are not considered substantive. So those do not need to go to the county.
Right. You mean related to the LLC?
Right. And, and the one-time breaking of it into two pieces.
So we would be voting on what the public has most recently seen?
No, we would.
I mean, with the exception of.
Yes.
Yeah. We'll make the changes and then I will be.
And then we'll, and then we'll further edit it for all the members.
And there's no more, no more public care and no more comments in this one.
No, but we've still got editing, editing to turn, formatting.
Editing and formatting, Marie, we're getting so good at that.
I know.
And then everyone's going to jump.
So it's that and 134 Thursday?
That and 134 Thursday. Because we, oh, there's one other thing. Thank you. We've got the master fee schedule on Thursday. We're preparing to send the first 11 chapters to Albany. When they get sent to Albany, they will have removed from them any reference to any fee. And when that happens, we need a master fee schedule that shows what the fees are. So I had circulated two weeks ago, the master fee schedule. The second thing is in signs and placards. Currently, the mayor signs off on signs on Main Street.
All right.
And as I read it now, the current version, that's gone.
The new version.
The new version. That's gone. And I don't think we want it to go. I think we want.
You want the mayor.
For the board or something. It looked as if you were mocking me as I was speaking. That's.
I'm sorry. I did not mean to do that. The, the proposed version does not have that in there. And I think we need it in there.
Is there anything that replaces the mayor or it just comes out completely?
It's gone.
So that's not a good idea.
Are we going to keep the permit fee for the short-term rentals at 250 or change it to 500?
Whatever you want to do. We don't need to do that in conjunction with passing chapter one.
Do we need to do it in the master fee schedule?
Yes, we do. And we will need to do it as, in another version of the master fee schedule.
Okay. So as, as it is now, is what we're.
Yeah. So Thursday will not be the last look at the master fee schedule.
Okay. No, no. We're going to be doing a roll.
And that's the whole point of it. Yeah.
But we haven't passed the master fee schedule Thursday because once the 11 chapters go to Albany, they refer to the master fee schedule because all the fees are taken up. And those are going, what do you think, Marie, next week?
What's that?
The first 11 chapters to Albany?
Oh. We're going to have them to him before the end of the week. That's great.
That's the goal.
Will you be surprised how much moving things over and moving things up and laying things up and putting headers and taking out headers?
We've established our conventions.
Yes, we did.
Once you have conventions, it's easy.
All we have to do is remember them.
What the, the CDC was supposed to announce today, new guidelines regarding COVID and mask wearing. What they announce is what we will follow here at Village Hall, Village Hall. And I believe it's going to call for mask wearing indoors. So if that's the case, we will.
Back to that.
We will be following that.
Can your, your, you've got, we've got trouble with the microphone already. Can the microphone pick up people speaking through masks sufficiently to be, to use, to be here?
People will have to speak up clearly. Speaking up through the mask, I've never, we have not found it to be much of an issue.
Through the recording. They.
Just in general.
I still want to go back online if we don't have to.
They haven't, they haven't mentioned separating spacing yet. They've just mentioned masks.
Masks, correct.
Vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Yes. So their guidelines is what we will be following.
Although it seems to me that separation is an aspect.
Really? And then back to Zoom.
So one, one other thing. I think that we should back to brochures versus fact sheets. Fact sheets is something should be, I don't know, we could print it out in hard or copy or whatever. And that should be somewhere posted prominently. It should have rules you have to be. If you want to work on a brochure, I'm fine with that. We're, you know, we can put it together and we just won't have it in the code. It won't be mandatory. We can print it out. We can get it out.
That's fine. I, I don't think, I, I, just to be clear from, from my perspective, it was never about having it in the code so much as having that information readily available for renters and.
I think that's fine. And it, and it's not really a brochure.
In a, in a way that's, well, in a way that's, is easily digestible.
The, the thing that was key about it in Palm Springs, which I thought could be useful here.
If I hear Palm Springs one more time, I'm going to slit my throat.
I know.
Palm Springs.
And I know. You can admit to Palm Springs. Dave, Palm Springs. When it is delivered.
You want my, my knife?
Yes, please.
When it's delivered by the host to the tenant, it is handed over and every renter who is 18 years and older signs a document that says, I have received the Good Neighbor Guidelines. That is a mechanism that, right, assures up passing that it's actually done. It is also, you know, one of the concerns that folks raised was how much information we have access to. That could potentially be another way to count adults is by signatures. It doesn't accommodate children, but, but it is one, it is a sort of more user-friendly mechanism of counting people and it could be beneficial.
I think people are getting a little bit over anxious about what they think we're going to collect for data.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah. We're not looking to collect every name and address of everybody.
And there are going to be any, there are going to be un, warrantless searches, for God's sake.
So anyway, I think if you'd like to, like to follow up on that, that's.
Palm Springs. Palm Springs, Palm Springs, Palm Springs.
I can only go this. Last thing, I think Sean Conway's come up with something he'd like to send to Sue Serino and send to Gala, which I'm fine with, except I think there should be, it's, it's not saying the village of his, Village of Cold Spring Historic Board or whatever. I think there should be something, a disclaimer on the bottom saying, this isn't necessarily the opinion of the Village Board or the Village as a whole, or something like that.
I think that's smart.
And can I also say that I thought it should have been signed by Alan Ochoa, because he is the chair. I know Sean, you know, wrote it, but I just found it awkward that the chair of the board wasn't the best.
Well, that's something you have to talk about.
Yeah. I just thought it was awkward.
So I will send something to Sean and ask him if he would, you know, if it's fine, just please include that. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
My favorite.
Palm Springs, Palm Springs.
Did you say that the parking committee presentation was tentative or?
I actually expected it to be.
This is what I had.